Bring this meeting of the City of International Falls Regular City Council Meeting to order. It's 5:30 Tuesday, January 21st. If you would please join me with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is to approve our agenda. We do have a handful of additions. The first is under Old Business to consider the Planning Commission recommendation to adopt the 2019 Comprehensive Plan. Number 12 is consider a Recreation Commission recommendation to amend bylaws for the city and school district joint powers agreement. And number 13 is to accept the retirement of Public Works Director Gary Skulman. We received an additional report from the Public Works Department. It's their annual report. And we have a couple of items of correspondence that has come in, one being the International Falls Public Library Board of Trustees Meeting Packet and the Minnesota DNR Deer Population Goal Setting Workshop Seeking Public Input. With those additions, I would, Chair would entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
So we have a motion from Counselor Kraus to accept the agenda with additions.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries four zero. Next is the approval of minutes from the January 3rd, 2020 Special City Council Meeting.
Sir, move.
We have a motion to accept by Counselor Deitch.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Bowler. Any discussion on the minutes from the Special City Council Meeting? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries four zero. Next is the minutes of Monday, January 6th, Regular City Council Meeting.
So move.
We have a motion to accept the minutes from Counselor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries four zero. Next, we have the minutes of the January 13th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Bowler. Any discussion on the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries four, for the motion, zero against the motion, and one abstention. Next, we will go to the payments of claim. We have transfers from the general fund, to the general fund, from water, the 601 of $5,559.67, and from sewer of $4,392. We have two, we have two Fund 401, the permanent improvement of $66,666.66, and that's split evenly between the 601 water and the 603 sewer in the amount of $33,333.33. Our capital outlay to the 403 fund is coming from water, $19,136.17, and from Fund 603 Sewer, $6,624.25, for a total transfers of $102,378.75. And then we have International Falls claims of $474,145.68, Airport Commission claims of $7,631.86, and Library Board claims of $4,274.85, for a total accounts payable of $486,052.39. Chair would entertain a motion to make the transfers and the accounts payable.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. With the motion and second on the floor, any questions, discussions on the accounts Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have audience. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to have a, speak to the council that's not on the agenda? Please come forward, sir. Please come forward and state your name.
Randy Calder. I wrote an article for the paper a little while back about the use of single-use plastic. And I wrote an email to Counselor Deitch about it, and I wonder, hopefully, the members of the council have read that article. My request is that the city establish committee merchants and concerned citizens to explore the possibility of moving forward with some kind of ban on plast, single-use plastic.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
I see Fort Francis adopted a policy on single-use plastic also. I think that's a good idea, that we started looking at that just because of the environmental concerns.
Okay. I, one of the things that, does anyone else have any comments? Okay. Please, Ken.
Mayor, I just had a question, and I don't want to show my ignorance, but can you differentiate single-use plastics from other use? I presume it's plastic that can't be recycled?
Typically, the target is plastic bags, okay? Throwaway plastic bags that have become a real environmental disaster. There are five, five pools in the oceans made up of areas that collect plastic and garbage. The biggest one is the Great Pacific Garbage Dump. It's twice the size of Texas, so it's substantial. There's five of these in the oceans throughout the world. So, the concern is this is, these plastics that are in the oceans and in the rivers and lakes and streams are getting into our food supply as well, as well as causing other problems. But one big example that I did some research on is, I read an article about a whale that was beach for some reason or other, and they did autopsy on the whale. It had 80 pounds of plastic that it had ingested. So plastics are getting ingested by the salmon, by, by fish. And so I think it's a real concern. I can't scientifically differentiate single-use plastics from others, but I think you pretty well said it, you know, it's, there are some plastics that are disposable to a degree, but there's a lot that can be done, that we can do to kind of minimize it. There are some plastics we're not going to be able to get away from. For example, in grocery stores, we're probably still going to stick with plastic to cover meat products and stuff like that one. But for a lot of the, even doggy bags, those styrofoam things, they can be replaced with recyclable material. And a lot of restaurants have, restaurants have already done that, so.
Well, I can tell you this, we will, I'll put that on our Committee of the Whole Meeting for next month. We'll have a discussion, and we'll see where, where we go from there. And so you're, you'd like to see a committee formed in some capacity to look at, at kind of going to the single-use plastics ban of?
Exactly. And I think the merchants would have the best input as far as what's practical, what's going to work for them, and some citizen input would be good as well.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. We will put that on the Committee of the Whole Agenda. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And you had something you wanted to bring up?
Yeah.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Joan Christiansen, and following up on what he was talking about, another environmental concern, as you may know, despite both the UN and US scientists' reports last year warning us that unless we reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 50% by 2030, 10 years from now, and become carbon neutral by 2050, we are going to experience catastrophic climate change. And despite that, our president pulled us out of the Paris Climate Agreement. So, in response to that, over 3,200 cities, states, businesses, and organizations pledged to keep the Paris Climate Agreement. And I belong to a Global Warming Committee of Indivisible, and we are sponsoring a film called Paris to Pittsburgh. And this film is produced by National Geographic, it's a very good film, and it highlights four cities' efforts to keep the Paris Climate Agreement. So I would like to invite the council to attend this. I think that there's a lot of good information here about what cities can do, and also the discussion from the film will get ideas from people attending. So I'd like to invite you to, to come. The, we're showing it tomorrow, actually. I'd like to apologize for missing the last meeting. I got mixed up on the dates, so.
No problem.
I know Joe set that up for me. But anyway, it's tomorrow at 5:00 at Holy Trinity Episcopal Church in the basement. We're going to have a light meal to start things off, and then the film will be shown with a discussion by Lee Grimm, Dr. Lee Grimm. And so I think it's a really good opportunity for people at City Council to find out what cities are doing, and to get ideas from, from other citizens in the community about what could be done, like banning single-use plastics, so.
Well, so I have a follow-up question. It is available tomorrow at 5:00 to 7:00 at Holy Trinity Church. Is there another place that we would be able to see it? Is it available online? Is it available, other places to see the?
I can answer that.
Please.
The film is actually currently available on Disney+.
Okay.
And I just watched it the other day.
Oh, great.
Because I, as you know, I'm unable to attend tomorrow.
You're not able to attend, yeah.
And I have a previous, something else. I've got to travel tomorrow for a training, but the, for anybody interested in watching the film, the film is available on Disney+, under the National Geographic portion, or you can just search it under Disney+. But it is there, and I believe it's also on National Geographic On Demand, but I don't think, don't quote me, I'm not certain that Minko carries that, but.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And I will note, it's a really good film.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody else that would like to bring something to the attention of the City Council? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to Old Business, which is consider the Planning Commission recommendation for the Comprehensive Plan. Ken, Kelly, would one of you guys want to just give us a brief update, and then we can go into any changes that we'd like to look at?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start, and if Mr. Myers has anything to add, he can, he's welcome to do that. The Planning Commission did have a couple of meetings and reviewed extensively the proposed Comprehensive Plan. And again, just a little bit of background information, the current Comprehensive Plan that the city has, has been in place since 1966. Typically, these are updated every 10 years, or, and rewritten every 20 years, so we've gone an extensive period of time based on the policies and guidelines in our plan dating back to 1966. So since 2017, we've been working with a consulting firm, the Community Design Group, to assist us and get input from a number of stakeholders and citizens, as well as other agency interests, in updating our Comprehensive Plan. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing on December 2nd, received public input. We sent out a copy of the plan and sought review comments from the City of Rainier, the town of Fort Francis, and Koochichin County, and we received the last of that input in early January from Koochichin County. The Planning Commission conducted another meeting and a continuation of consideration of the Comprehensive Plan on January 6th, and adopted this resolution that was included in your packet recommending that the council move forward and adopt the Comprehensive Plan. And again, the plan's had a number of modifications since its original draft, and some of the things that were changed were, are included in your packet, and you'll see that, actually at the council's request at the last meeting, we've included some changes to a few pages, page 38, 39, 40 of the draft plan, showing the revisions that the consultant had made based on the county's comments. Said you that was related to annexation and making sure that we coordinated with the county on any proposed annexations, and also have a process that involves stakeholder or citizen input as part of that process. So clearly, that's something that the city would be interested in doing, and so some language was modified in that particular section. Another provision of the comp plan that was in the plan and then was removed was a section considering creating deer hunting zones in the community that would be restricted to bow hunting only, but after review of the stakeholder input where, I believe it was 40% of the people were of the opinion that they didn't want to see deer hunting in the community. There was 30% undecided and about 30% in favor of it. The Planning Commission recommended and had the deer hunting section taken out of the code that you have in front of you, or the Comprehensive Plan that you have in front of you. So deer hunting is no longer considered, and will be allowed, at least in the Comprehensive Plan, going forward. So with that, it's a substantial document, and again, it's designed to provide strategies and guidelines for the Planning Commission and the City Council to follow, as well as people who might be interested in doing future developments in our community. This lays out the policies and guidelines for moving forward. In particular, it lays out proposed land uses, and again, the Comprehensive Plan is a guiding document. The actual tool that will be used to implement these policies and guidelines are the zoning ordinance, and that'll be something that'll be forthcoming before the Planning Commission. My estimate would be in the next four to six weeks for them to consider that. And there'll be a new official zoning map adopted with the new zoning ordinance, and then those provisions and the guidelines in the comp plan will be incorporated in the zoning ordinance. And the zoning ordinance is what we'll use in undertaking enforcement and future land use applications with, for building permits and other activities. So the recommendation through this resolution is to move forward and recommend that the City Council adopt the plan as you see it before you. My final comment would just be is that the council has the sole discretion in adopting the plan and any provisions and guidelines and strategies that you see in there. You can make any modifications that you see fit, but the document you have before you tonight is the recommendation from the Planning Commission. And again, it's based on a couple of years' input from citizens through citizen engagement in personal meetings at various businesses, website, and other surveys. So it's a fairly comprehensive document, and it's had a lot of community engagement.
So I just want to clarify for the council, we can accept the, the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to adopt it as presented today. We can also make modifications in the event that there may be modifications that we'd like to make to it. So at this time, I would open up discussion on if any modifications need to be made before we adopt the, the Planning and Zone, or the Comprehensive Plan that we've been in works with for years.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So on page 38, they, there was a rework of the previous version, the version delivered on the 24th of October. There was a rework of that paragraph on page 38, which I am okay with. Would you like me to read the previous paragraph? I'm looking at the, I have the old.
Just use the paragraph that's in the document.
Okay, the document, okay, the, I'm okay with this, that this plan recommends completing these steps before, and this is in regards to annexation, that we, completing a financial cost-benefit analysis on the implications of the proposed annexation, absolutely. Close coordination with Koochichin County, absolutely. Communication with the affected landowners, absolutely. I am, I am okay with that. There are, there are two changes on our, on our agenda for, or on, from this document, from the document that was delivered to the Planning Commission to this document, so I'm okay with that. On page 40 is where I take a slight issue in that, in that paragraph.
Which paragraph?
It's the strengthening coordination.
Okay, gotcha.
With the county. The paragraph currently reads, "City leaders have noted that there are opportunities to increase coordination with the county regarding residential development in areas outside of the city." That paragraph, or that sentence previously stated regarded, it was, "City leaders have noted that there are opportunities for better coordination with the county regarding limiting residential development in areas outside of the city." That is the language that the Planning Commission asked that we strike.
Okay.
I have to say that I am against striking said language, because this is International Falls' Comprehensive Plan, not Koochichin County's, and I feel it is in our best interest as the City of International Falls to limit taking city utilities outside of the city limits.
Okay.
That includes city water, Minnesota power, natural gas, and sewer.
Okay.
They recommended that we, we remove that language. I don't know that I'm necessarily comfortable with that, and I am not comfortable with expanding utilities outside of city limits. If you want city utilities, live in the city.
So please help me with the wording of what you'd like that to say.
I would just like that, "limiting residential development in areas outside of the city." We didn't say we're, we're stopping it. We just said that we're limiting. We will have a conversation about it. I'm okay if, and ultimately, it's up to us as a council, but I, again, will state, if you want city utilities, live in the city.
Okay. Anyone else have thoughts on that particular language that Counselor Kraus is noting?
Mayor?
Please.
I think he makes a lot of sense. I agree 100% with his full statement.
Okay.
And I agree that if you want the facilities, you should live in the city.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any thoughts on that? Is anybody against, at this point, is anybody, no, we'll just leave that conversation right now. Is there any other points that we want to discuss?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Kelly, did you have anything else that you wanted to add? I don't want, okay.
To the same point as what Counselor Kraus had, had just brought up, and I guess mine is slightly different, my concern is slightly different. I, I do slightly disagree. There is a Minnesota statute that discusses how we handle annexation, and all of the Minnesota statutes that, that describe how a municipality would handle annexation is very well laid out in state ordinance. I think that a lot of the information on page 38 could be struck, because obviously, we're going to do a financial cost-benefit. We're not just annexing people to annex. Close coordination with Koochichin County. We have to notify everybody that is affected by any annexation, and the same thing with the affected landowners. What concerns me about the language, again, is to what Counselor Kraus had just said on the other side. This is the City of International Falls' Comprehensive Plan. Obviously, we're going to be following state statute, we're going to be doing everything legally. We have to have public hearings if we do annexation. We have to talk to the affected owners of the properties. To add in additional steps into the annexation, to me, doesn't serve the best, the best for International Falls. So I would like to, on page 38, strike the sentence that says, "This plan recommends steps 1, 2, and 3," because we could put in the wording that International Falls would handle all Minnesota state laws and statutes regarding annexation, and then strike each one of the, the lines that says, "The plan recommends completing the outlined above and then proceeding to annexation if warranted." Those are all things that we're going to do, and, and I understand that if we're going to do them, you could have them in the paperwork, but it just seems like we are really pushing our Comprehensive Plan for people that are not in International Falls. And that's, that's my thoughts, is on page 38 to strike those four sections. And the last piece that I had is the most minor of anything we've just discussed, is on page 62. I would like to add, in goal number four, work with, in paragraph 2, work with the ARDC, the Koochichin County HRA. I'd like to add the International Falls HRA. Historically, our International Falls HRA has not worked in this capacity, but I don't want to limit us in the future in, if the International Falls HRA is willing to change what they're doing. And I'd like to add on page 62, the International Falls HRA in, in Strategy 4.1. Is there anything else that we'd like to discuss in regards to the Comprehensive Plan as presented? If not, at this, oh, please, did something?
Mayor, I was just wondering, for your, your suggestions on page 38, then showing what should be struck, do you have, you'll have an example of that so we can?
I do. I, I do, and I will, we'll, we'll definitely lay that out once we have a motion on, on the floor. We'll lay out any changes that we're going to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Do we have to do the changes one by one, or are we going to do it all in one?
I think we should do them one by one.
I agree.
So the Chair would entertain a motion to accept the Comprehensive Plan of 2019 as written. We can make amendments on the, once we get going.
As written?
As written. Then I would make, make a motion.
For one of, for a change in the document?
I was gonna, what I was gonna do, what my, what I was gonna do is make a motion to accept as read, and then make amendments to the motion.
To the motion.
So each one of the amendments gets voted on.
I move that we adopt the planning document as written, so that we can discuss potential changes.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deech. So we are now in discussion of accepting the Comprehensive Plan as written. Is there any amendments at this time?
On, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I propose on page, sorry, because I lost it.
Forty?
Page forty, I propose that we go back to the original language, adding, limiting residential development in areas outside of the city. That has been in the document since it was written in 2017 and gone through committee after committee, time after time, for the last three years, I feel.
Do you, Ken, do you have the original language on that particular piece?
I do not have it in front of me, no. Here, pass it down.
This one right here?
It certainly is.
Okay. So the recommended language that I believe the, the motion on the floor is, is the paragraph strengthening, strengthening coordination with the county as written in the previous version of 102419, reading as such. "City leaders have noted that there are opportunities for better coordination with the county regarding limiting residential development in areas outside of the city. Closely working with the county to adopt a unified stance that will help reduce potential future requests for provisions of services outside the current service area and will help protect the area's agricultural and natural assets." And that was from the previous version of 102419. We have a motion to amend the document with that language. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any discussion on that?
Mayor?
Please.
And I just want to, excuse me, make it clear with the council that that was actually the sentence that I think created the most heartburn, if you will, for the county when, when it was presented to the county board as a committee of the whole. But I understand the city council's position. I just wanted to make that clear to each of you, and, and I think the language is consistent with the state policy on annexation as well.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion and second for the first amendment to the document. Any other discussion? Question on the amendment?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries. Five zero. The second amendment is the one that I had brought forth, which would be on page 39, and I would make the motion to strike the language on, I'm sorry, page 38, to strike the language on page 38 that starts with, "This plan recommends completing these steps before any annexation action." All three bullet points. And then in the first paragraph, the second paragraph, and the third paragraph, the wording that says, "The plan recommends completing the steps outlined above and then proceeding to annexation if warranted." That would be my motion for the second amendment.
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion on that amendment? Hearing none. Question on the second amendment?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion carries five zero. And the third amendment is the one that I also brought forward, which would be on page 32.
Sixty-two.
I'm sorry, sixty-two. And on page 62, under goal four, strategy one point, or I'm sorry, 4.1, paragraph two, after the word, the Koochichin County HRA, I would like to add International Falls HRA. That would be my motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to have a third amendment, which would be adding the words International Falls HRA under Strategy 4.1 on page 62. Any discussion on the third amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I, too, feel very strongly that getting the International Falls HRA involved in, in any conversations about housing and workforce housing is important.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Are there any other amendments that we have not discussed that you would like to add to this document before we vote on it as a whole? Hearing none. We have a motion on the floor with three amendments. The first amendment is the one that Counselor Kraus had offered on page 40. The second one is on, that is the one I had offered on page 38, and the third one is on page 62 that I had offered. All three have passed, so the motion is to accept the Comprehensive Plan with those three changes. Any discussion? I, I just want to say, this has been a very, very, very long project. We've went round for round. We had city input. We've had public input, business input. The Planning and Zoning Commission met so many times, and I can't even count the many of hours that the administrator has put into this. And this is, you know, I, I say this sometimes because it's so true. Mayor Anderson has laid a lot of groundwork for us to be able to move forward, and this is one of the things that he pushed so hard so that we had it. The last one that we had was from 1966. It's advised to have a new one probably every 20 years, so we're only a little bit behind. So with that being said, with no other discussion, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries five zero.
Feel that weight, get it off your shoulders.
All right. Now we'll go on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is items that don't need discussion, average, common business. The first item we have is to approve the quote for the workers' compensation coverage and deductible premium option through the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust and authorized signatures. The second one would be to approve and allow the street commissioner to attend the 2020 conferences and training as presented. And the third would be approved travel and skill path training exercise expenses in Brainerd for the fire chief and city administrator. Your, quite, Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deech. No discussion on the consent agenda. Question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we go on to new business. We have a proclamation by the mayor, City of International Falls, State of Minnesota. The proclamation is, was asked for by St. Thomas School, Aquinas School for Catholic Schools Week. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the mayoral proclamation.
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. A proclamation of the, by the mayor, International Falls, State of Minnesota, "Whereas St. Thomas Aquinas Catholic School is accredited by MNSAA, Minnesota Non Public Schools Accrediting Association, which is committed to ensuring school quality through rigorous standards, and whereas St. Thomas Aquinas Catholic Church is committed to providing a safe, structured, and caring learning environment dedicated to developing each student's God-given potential. And whereas St. Thomas Aquinas Catholic Church, education is demonstrated by its ability to contribute to the city's welfare through its history by raising levels of knowledge, competence, and experience. And whereas St. Thomas Catholic School has nurtured the gifts and talents by each child through a challenging academic curriculum and daily opportunities to grow in mind, body, and faith. Now therefore, I Harley M. Droba," I messed my own name up, "mayor of International Falls, do hereby declare January 26, 2020 through February 1, 2020, as Catholic Schools Week at St. Thomas Aquinas School, in witness wherefore I set my hand this 21st day of January 2020."
Cheater.
All right. You have heard the proclamation by the mayor? Question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries. Next, Public Works Committee recommendation to install school zone signs on Fourth and Eighth, Fourth Street at Eighth and Ninth Avenue for St. Thomas, St. St. Thomas Aquinas School.
So moved.
We have a motion and second. I just want to be very clear, now that we're in discussion of this already, this will not be done until spring with the snowbanks the way they are, with where we're at. It was discussed at, at the Public Works meeting that this is very important, that we do this, but the timing, we'll do it in the spring, so.
Agreed.
Any, any other discussion?
I don't think anyone seconded it. Oh, he did, okay.
It went really quick. They were both trying to.
You know what, Mr. Mayor?
They were both trying to motion.
Mr. Mayor Bailey, I would rather, since Counselor Buller is the chair, allow him to, since we both motioned at the same time, to give him the motion, and I will, in fact, second it.
Okay, so the motion is by Counselor Buller, and the second is by Counselor Kraus. I didn't know that school zone signs were so exciting that you guys have to fight over the motions.
Well, it's in my ward, and it's near and dear.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next is a resolution for business development infrastructure application to the Minnesota Department of Economic Development or DED. Ken, if you'd like to give a quick update on this one.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a resolution that was prepared. It's essentially a form resolution that the Department of Employment and Economic Development prepares for this particular business development infrastructure application and grant. And we are intending on submitting an application to improve 22nd Street with curb and gutter by tumorous road surfacing. There's already street lighting out there, but there'll be some water main looping and connections, as well as a sanitary sewer extension. This is primarily necessary because of Ricky Roach's building at the end of 22nd Street and the UPS business that's operating out of that on a lease basis. And KITA has an industrial park, and the council's recently approved a, a preliminary plat for that area. So we're applying for grant funds, which are 50% local, 50% DED, to do those public improvements. KITA had initially started doing this work, but our engineers with WSN have offered to do it at no cost to the city, and they've worked with a number of their other clients in submitting these. So we had it on the agenda to approve and be prepared to submit an application by January 31st. The KITA executive director is great with WSN working on it, but we want to extend it or provide a little bit additional time to do it. So I, I would envision at the earliest having this on the agenda February 3rd, and this is just for your information, and we'll bring it back to the council at a future meeting.
Okay. So we will have this under old business at the next meeting, then?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have a resolution approving the application for an exempt permit for the Ruffle Grouse Society Voyager Chapter to conduct a raffle on March 27, 2020. Chair would entertain a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Deech. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Buller. Hearing none. Question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next is a resolution approving an application for an exempt permit for the Rotary Club of International Falls to conduct bingo and a raffle on February 29, 2020.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Discussion? Hearing none. Question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I add that this is for the Mardi Gras Gala, that all the proceeds go toward trying to get the spray part done, so this is a really good event.
Ken, just so you know, on that, on that application, when we, when I sign it, the date is wrong on the, on the resolution. It says the twelfth.
Twelfth.
The twelfth day, rather than the 21st.
Very good. We'll make that correction.
Okay, next, we have a mayoral appointment to the Police Civil Service Commission due to a vacancy expiring December 31, 2020. It would be my intent to fill Julie Erman into Dave Peterson's position, and I want to thank Dave for his many years of service on the commission, especially in, in the last couple of years. We've had a lot of work in that, that, in the police civil service, and I, I do really appreciate what he's done. So with that being said, I did receive a letter of resignation from Mr. Peterson, and it would be my intent to appoint Julie Erman to fill his vacancy. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that vacancy.
So moved.
So we have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second? We have a second by Counselor Buller. One of the things I do want to point out is Julie Erman has a background in HR, and that was one of the things that I was really hoping to get on both the fire civil service and the police civil service. So for the police civil service now, we'll have a, a past officer and an HR person, and I think that that'll really balance out what we have on that committee, so. Any discuss, any other discussion? Hearing none. Question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next is the Fire Department fee schedule for 2020. This was, was submitted to the Committee of the Whole at our last meeting, recommended by the fire chief. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the fee schedule.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Deech. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. We have no discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have the approval of the 2020 Pay Equity Report. Administrator Anderson.
Thank you.
Oh, I love the smile as soon as I said that. That's the best part.
Well, I always smile when you call on me, Mr. Mayor, so. Actually, we, this is a pay equity report. It was distributed and at your table this evening. The reason it wasn't included in the packet is we had briefly met and discussed this with the HR Committee on Friday afternoon. This particular pay equity report is one that all local governments in Minnesota are required to submit every three years. Our last one was submitted in 2017, reflecting pay equity for pay that existed in 2018. This particular report is for our third year of compliance, and, and it's for pay that existed in, in December of 2019. So this is a report that's required to be submitted to the state by the end of January. That's why it's on this agenda. And essentially, the Pay Equity Act was one that was adopted back in 1984, and it requires that positions receive comparable pay for comparable worth or work. And specifically, any jobs that are, or positions that are female-dominated positions cannot be underpaid relative to male-dominated jobs or classifications. With this particular report... With this particular report, we've prepared this based on, as I said, the 2019 salaries and this report shows that we are non-compliant and we need to make adjustments or look at options for making adjustments. I have a call into the state program administrator regarding that. The report is due by January 31st and this being the last council meeting, this is reflective of what our actual pay is. And so, at the present time, I'm recommending that the city council adopt this report despite the fact that it's non-compliant and allow us some latitude to work with the state to explore options to bring it into compliance. If necessary, it may require a follow-up council meeting between now and January 30th, but I don't have complete information to say that with certainty. I will say, just to elaborate a bit, is that one of the, there's a couple of reasons why we've come into non-compliance and some of them are kind of behind, beyond our control. For instance, we've previously, in the last report that was submitted, had a female in the finance officer position and it was above the predicted pay line. She left the state because of employment with her husband and so we hired another person as a replacement, which is a male. And again, that position is at or above the predicted pay line, but it shows that there's fewer female-dominated positions that are at or above the predicted pay line, so that basically put us in the non-compliance. Essentially, all we have to do is bring one position up at the predicted pay line and we would be compliant. So in order to do that, we have two positions that are part of a bargaining unit, so we need to coordinate with the bargaining unit to make changes. And one person or position that would be at the library and the library board trustees makes those decisions. So right now, it's something that we don't have a lot of direct control over without getting input from other agencies. So that's as complete and thorough as I can be and very transparent. I'm not happy with having to submit a non-compliant report, but I think the state, once they receive it, will notify us of non-compliance and then we have some time to work through and resolve whatever issues need to be acted on to bring it into compliance.
All right, well, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the pay equity report.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have a promotion of police officers, Justin Franz and Paul Kennedy, to the rank of sergeant. You did get a letter from the police chief with the information from the police chief. Any, Chair would entertain a motion to those promotions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Point of order, this is just council information, not action.
Oh, yeah. You're the best. All right, so that, and we actually knew that, it was in the Committee of the Whole when he told us that. All right, so the one that we do have to take council action is to appoint Logan Holst, is that correct? Logan Holst as a part-time police officer effective January 22nd, 2020. And again, that information was supplied by Chief Mastin. Chair would entertain a motion for that one.
So moved.
So we have a motion by Counselor Deitch, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. And discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. So next, we have to get a resolution for the PERA declaration for part-time officer Logan Holst, now that we have him hired. Chair would entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next is a, to consider Recreation Commission recommendation to amend the bylaws for city members in the joint power agreement. So the wording that is getting changed is under the recreational membership, Recreation Commission membership. The new wording will read, "The City of International Falls and School District 361 to consist of three members each, but no less than one elected official. The remaining two appointees may be any member from their taxing district at the independent discretion of each representative council or board. The Recreation Commission will elect three at-large members to the board." And that is, that has had two readings at the Recreation Commission, so before us is whether we're willing to adopt those changes in the joint powers agreement. Chair would entertain a motion if we're willing to do that.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Discussion? Well, this is one of the things that we did bring up at the end of last year in December, November, December, that we wanted to look at getting bylaws changed so that we can have more ability to appoint citizens to boards. We still have conversations going on with the Airport Commission and with KITA, but this is the first one that we went from our city council to our committees, our joint power agreements, and then ultimately, they changed the agreements and they're going back to their parent organization. So I appreciate the work that we did here to get it back down to the Rec Commission to come back to us. So I appreciate all the hard work that we've all done from the Rec Commission to this board. So with that being said, we have a motion and second to approve the bylaw changes. Chair would call a question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. And next, we have a letter of retirement from our Public Works Director, Gary Skulman. Gary, would you like to come up and just say a couple of words? Because you're kind of a fixture around here.
I guess I'd just like to say thank you for you and all previous elected officials and the city employees that I've had the opportunity to work with through the years. It's been fun and it's been hard times and controversial and pretty much, I guess you could call it life, so.
Yeah.
It's been something that's, I've tried to do the best we can on that and I think it's with circumstances the way they are, it's a matter of, I just, it's time to move on and let the city move on with mother's issues.
Also, so.
And it's been very rewarding for me and I hope I've won of being able to work with the rest of the people and that stuff and provide the information it has for the years, so.
Well, when you came into my office on Wednesday and we kind of discussed it and I read your last line as you're talking to me, because you gave me your letter of resignation or your retirement letter. And as you're talking and reading through and I just came across the June 15th, 1971 feels like yesterday. And with that being said, all of the conversations I've ever had with you with Public Works or anything, and we'll be like, well, what size pipe does that have over there? And you'll be like six inch until you get to 53 and then it turns, you know, just the vast knowledge that you have of everything that's under our ground that we can't see to even find out if you're making it up.
Like your whole class.
But no, I appreciate everything you've given the city and I've only had an opportunity to work with you for five years, but I know that the people that have been in the city have nothing but great things to say about you and your time here, so. I, you know, like I said, I only have five years and you have, well, more than my lifetime in. So with that being said, Commissioner Skulman is gonna take his retirement on the 31st of January. With that being said, I would take a motion to accept his letter of retirement.
Make a motion with regret?
Okay, we have a motion with regret. Does that mean that he still has to come back or what? I don't even know how that works. I know how many times you had to quit and come back.
Just once.
So we have a motion to accept the letter of retirement, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Please.
I do want to say that these days are truly remarkable. I think one of the things that's been most impressive to me about International Falls has been the longevity that we've been able to maintain with our staff. And, you know, for Gary, you had talked, and really Gary is the institutional memory of our Public Works Department. He does have all that stuff in the back of his head, actually in the forefront of his head because he can just recite it like that and we're gonna miss that. That's been an asset for our community. And so to be with the same employer in public employment since 1971 is truly remarkable because a lot of staff come and go, Gary is not. He's really dedicated his life to this community and he and I talked a little bit today and he spent a lot of time in his service to the Fire Department. He spent six years in service on the ambulance department and he's been with the Public Works Department since 1971. So I hold public service because it's my chosen field in very high regard and somebody that can withstand some of the blows and the trials and tribulations in Public Works Department for this many years is truly a credit to him, having done it that long. So I just personally want to wish you well, Gary. I want to thank you for everything you've done for the City of International Falls and our citizens and really, on behalf of all the staff, we're truly appreciative of everything that you've done, so thank you very much. We're sorry to see you leave and I just, it's truly incredible that he's been here this long and I think it's a credit to the city and it's a credit to him and his attitude and work ethic to our community, so thank you.
All right, with nothing else to be said, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote no. Motion carries 4-1.
Forty-eight and a half years.
Are we supposed to follow?
I have to.
On this way.
Well, we had a plan on this side of the table.
Yeah, it was kind of scary, I was like.
Thank you, Gary.
Oh, thank you, Gary. Keep your phone close.
Gary, I will say you were outdone by Donna Hodel though, she was with the county for I think 71 years, but.
So that brings up a second piece to the retirement of Gary. We need to authorize a process to fill the vacancy. We did have an HR meeting last Friday and we had a quick discussion about this and I think what we'd like to do is to put Commissioner Brokaw in that position as a, how would we word that? interim position while we get through the 53 project and see how we restructure Public Works, what makes sense moving forward, so. I would, Ken, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, Mayor, I would just add that in the past when we've had vacancies at department head-level positions, and I guess the one that comes to mind most recently is when my predecessor left the city, there was a vacancy for about 12 months, actually, and so in the interim period, the city had authorized additional pay for the deputy city administrator to assume the additional responsibilities of the current position that she held as well as the city administrator's position. And we have a similar scenario here with the Public Works Director retiring on January 31st and then the Street Water Commissioner being the next level administrator or manager in the department. Perhaps you'd want to consider an interim pay adjustment for him assuming these duties and responsibilities. And I have to say, and I could probably speak for Gary, I know that he was kind of looking forward to the next couple of years because the city council has embarked on a very ambitious public improvement project with doing as many as 84 streets in 2020, a similar number, close to it in 2021, and the Highway 53 reconstruction project. And, you know, that's really a public works director, city engineer's dream is to have those kinds of projects before you, but again, Gary is gonna be needing to step down and so there's a lot of responsibilities and a lot of work to move forward with that. And I think the Street Commissioner deserves some compensation for the additional work that's gonna be coming up until we can address the questions that you raised regarding department organization and reappointing a new Public Works Director.
I would say I did speak with Commissioner Brokaw and he is not too, well, I don't know how to word that, but he said he's not interested in a pay raise, but that's weird, who says that? It's kind of weird. But what I would like to do is to, if the council is interested, I would like to appoint him into an interim position and as we look at how we're gonna handle the Public Works Department moving forward, we can maybe look at going back with back pay moving forward, but as of right now, I would like to accept Commissioner Brokaw's wishes and not give him a pay raise, put him in that role and let's find out how we're gonna reorganize the department. Commissioner Brokaw, would you like to speak on your own behalf? Please.
I would just like to add, there's a great deal of humility in the Brokaw name, so. I would be against that motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I move that we appoint the Street Commissioner Ted Brokaw into the interim position, a Public Works Director, and explore further potential salary increases. With back pay. With back pay.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion and second to appoint Commissioner Brokaw to acting Public Works Director and look into back pay as we find out what salary or whatever we're gonna work through HR, is that accurate?
Yes.
And I guess I missed, as you were writing, you were making your motion, do we have a second on that? We do have a second, okay. So we have a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0.
You have big shoes to fill, Ted.
And you have to be here for a while.
When did you start?
All right, any other business, regular business to come before the council? All right, we have reports that were given to us from city administrators, oh, our business licenses, the administration department, Public Works Department. We did get some information from Kelly Myers and the Police Department and the Fire Chief. Is there anything you'd like to add? Administrator Anderson?
I do just want the council, excuse me, I do want the council to be informed that the finance officer, the deputy city administrator, myself will be on a phone conversation with Moody's Rating Agency. conversation with Moody's Rating Agency on Thursday, 23rd of January, at 10:00 a.m. to go over some questions that the rating agency has on our upcoming refunding bond issue for the Voyagers National Park Headquarters Bond. So they have some standard questions. Hopefully, they'll be providing those in advance so that we can have a conversation with them and, and obtain a, a bond rating for that upcoming issue. So, other than that, I don't have anything else I would like to add. And I want to thank all the departments, actually, for the work that they invested in preparing the annual reports for the council so you can kind of have a better idea of what we do over the course of the year. And again, it's highlights, it's not everything, but I think it, hopefully, the council and the public can have a, a better appreciation for all the work that goes in the day-to-day activities of our various departments. So I want to thank them for that.
Thank you. Did you want to, and you're welcome to say that we're not ready to, the conversation this morning with the county regarding the airport financing?
I can't talk about that. The finance officer, myself, attended the Cooching County Board Committee of the Whole meeting. The purpose of the meeting was just to discuss the, I'll call it a cash flow deficit with the airport project. As the council knows, we've had a, a rebuild of the terminal building, and that was a two-phase project, and so Phase Two has not been totally completed. And then we've embarked on a runway reconstruction project that is a four-phase project, or about four years, and those costs are fairly substantial. And the bulk of the costs are paid by the FAA. MINDOT is paying as much as 2.5% of the costs, and then the city and the county only have to split the other 2.5%. So it's a, a very good program, but the cash flow deficit comes up because we have to expend the monies first, submit claims for reimbursement, and then it takes roughly three weeks or even longer, particularly a lot longer on change orders. And so we've, because of that, there's a, a deficit that's carried over, and we've just asked the county to submit their share, because we're 50-50 partners with the county on the Airport Commission. And so we had a brief discussion about that this morning, and the county is gonna be setting up a subcommittee of two of the commissioners that sit on the Airport Commission, and myself and the county administrator, to talk about how the county can move forward to reimburse the city for roughly $950,000 in costs. The city does serve as the fiscal agent for that, and so we expend the monies initially and then get reimbursed, again, from the FAA and MINDOT. So we had a conversation about that this morning, and there'll be more to come.
Any, any other department heads that want to address the council? Hearing none? Reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. I, I have one thing. It has not become public knowledge yet. We just found out today. The KTI, Cooching Technology Initiative, got all of the funding for the broadband grant, $6.5 million, to expand broadband from International Falls to Ericsburg and International Falls to the junction. With that being said, it will be to the House broadband from International Falls to both entities. A lot of hard work went in from Ted Saxton, Jim Yount, Joe Marshawn, Paul Nevinin, and I showed up from time to time. So it was a very, very good. Paul Bunyan has been, it's a, it's a total $6.268 million project that is gonna cost us roughly $22,000. So, pretty good stuff. So, that's all I have today. I have to apologize, I'm usually pretty, pretty good about getting mayor reports and stuff in, but Icebox Days was a huge thing this year. That really took a lot of time, and I want to thank the chamber, Public Works, the Police Department, Fire Department, and specifically, I really want to thank the chamber for kind of changing how we did the snow sculptures. I think that that is one of the best additions that we had this year, is in the past, the school district just came over and did the snow sculptures, but because it's been cold and it, it's just kind of a hassle getting the kids over there back and forth, we opened it up to the community, and the community responded, very similar to how Rainy Lake Medical Center responded when we didn't have the Christmas parade. So for all the change that we have going on in our community, change is good. Change can seem bad, change can be different, but not all change is bad. Sometimes change goes in the right direction, and I think our Icebox Days event this year and a handful of the other things that we've been doing really shows that change can be good. So that's all I have for, and next time, we'll have a mayor's report that's like actually written. So with that being said, we don't have anything, oh, please.
Mayor, just one minor item. As head of the Blake Committee, I'm still looking for five items from each ward that I haven't seen.
I have mine done. I just haven't printed it out. It's on my computer. Yeah, I, I do have it done.
All right. All right, thank you.
I'm not.
All right. Anybody from audience want to come forward? Please.
I may have this spoke earlier regarding single-use plastics. If I use the term ban, in Minnesota, you cannot ban the use of plastics. The idea is to discourage the use of single-use plastic. I just wanted to clarify that. Port Francis has banned it because they can't tell a lot changes. The best we can do is discourage the use by using reusables, such as grocery bags and stuff like that. So I just want to.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Please, please.
Are grocery bags recyclable?
You're talking about the paper bags?
No, the plastic. I know that there's a collection unit inside County Market and in.
Super One?
Super One. Are they recyclable?
Some, some plastic bags are recyclable to a degree. Okay, so I don't want to mislead you. They're like 59% recyclable.
Or would there be a way to potentially encourage a business to get a reci, I mean, a recyclable bag? Ultimately, a cloth bag would be ideal, but to perhaps change their bags, I would assume, to just throw out, there's a very large corporation on that end of town that has a very hefty bag, that I would assume is probably recyclable, because it's very, the, the plastic itself is, is much stronger than at other locations. I wonder if there would be a way to then recycle.
The key on that is it's reusable.
Sure.
It means less and less plastic going into the environment. But I think that, just lost my train of thought. I think the real key is, is just to discourage. Now, being as Super One and County Market know along the one family, I'm sure that they have ideas of how they've dealt with this in Duluth. Duluth and Minneapolis have both put fees on plastic bags in their, and some are recyclable. So that's, that's the approach, is to put a fee on plastic bags, hopefully to discourage the use of plastic bags. And that's what I say. The merchants would have, would be keyed in on how to approach this best.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you.
One more question. How about garbage bags?
There are gonna be, I don't know about that. I haven't done any research.
Okay, I just wondered, I just thought.
Because, yeah, we all use them. And so, there are limitations. I saw, when I was doing some research, a list of all the things that are, you know, it's gonna be pretty difficult for our society to do away with. You go to places like Europe where, you know, we have big garbage bins every week to dispose of, and some of the European countries have maybe that much, you know. So some countries are much more advanced in how to deal with some of their garbage and trash, but that's a great question. I'll see if I can do some research on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With no other audience, our next city council meeting is Monday, February 3rd, 2020, at 5:30. Please stick around, we have an EDA meeting.